And I'm going to start by sharing a screen and getting to our presentation. All right, welcome. We have, as you know, launched a new mission statement this year, and so I just want to start off by reading our mission statement there on the bottom of the screen, which is Mommy Valley Country Day School cultivates an inclusive community of intellectual excellence, where our learners creatively explore their passions and boldly inspire positive change in the world. And that really has driven all of what we are doing and what we have put together for you this evening, working to ensure the best education for your children. So for tonight, I'm going to start off with the welcome, and then you will hear from Dr. Paula Apostolou, our Director of Teaching and Learning. She's going to share with you the research and process that went into our decision to make this change. You will get a chance to hear from Michelle Thomas and also from Eric Graham, and then we're going to finish up with Q and A. First of all, want to thank you. As we sent out the communication about this town hall, we also linked a survey, and so many of you shared with you, you're shared with us some of your thoughts and feelings about this initial announcement, and we have incorporated those into our presentation tonight. The purpose truly is to help educate and share with you all the exciting change that we're hoping to implement in fall of next year, which is a simplification and restructuring of our divisions. What we are changing to would be lower school being pre-K to third grade and middle school being fourth to eight. As we embark upon our Zoom, I'm hopeful that you'll have your name in your Zoom window, so that if we don't get a chance to answer your question perhaps live tonight, we can make sure that we can follow up with you, and so that we can call you by name when appropriate.
Twenty-two people on it.
When we, you are welcome to put your questions in the chat. It's going to be open throughout the duration of the presentation. And if we don't answer them in session, we will make sure we answer them at the end. So I want to start off just by thanking you for the survey responses. A couple of things that I wanted to share with you regarding the survey were a few questions surrounding more big picture items that I thought would be helpful for me to answer as head of school. The first of those was class size. Are we doing this restructuring because we want to put more kids in our classes? And the answer to that is no. As you will hear tonight, we are doing a repairing, but that does not in any way, shape or form impact class size. What it impacts is the dynamics of the teaching team and the students who will be in together, but not class size. There were also questions about whether this was financially motivated, and truly it's not. We have been doing this based on the work that our teachers and our divisional leaders have been doing regarding curriculum and instruction and what's best for kids. And so there's no real financial advantage to doing what we're doing with the simplification of the divisions. So I just wanted to answer those two big picture questions, and we will get started with Dr. Paula Apostolou.
Thanks Lynn. Good evening, everyone. As Lynn said, it's really nice to see everyone. I think had we known that we were only going to get about thirty people total, we may have had this in person, but nonetheless, we are excited to share with you in this way. So I wanted to start off by just talking a little bit about history of Mommy Valley and our educational excellence. You may be aware that throughout our educational history, we have spearheaded changes that have been forward-thinking. For example, we were the first in the United States to implement a Montessori approach that started way back in 1911. We were the first, or we became a country day school with a focus on the outdoors beginning in the 1930s. We had an open school plan that was new at the time back in the 60s, and a lot of people are really aware of our Wintram program, which is now referred to as our intensive program, which, which dates back to our history. So we still see these elements in our school that date back over 100 years. And as an educational institution of excellence, we believe in reviewing our programs and engaging in professional learning communities that discuss current research that continue to improve our programs. So again, all those things that I mentioned happened a long, long time ago, but there are still Ellen elements of them that have just been tweaked and improvised over the years to maintain our traditions, but also stay current with the times and the institution. We, we used data to drive this instruction. A lot of that did come from, as Lynn mentioned, teacher experience. So throughout the years, they have been sharing their, their challenges with the current age groupings. Yes, there are successes as well, but they have been transparent in what some of those challenges have been. We also looked at survey data that we had sent really for our strategic planning purposes, but what came out of that data was that families wanted to see more intentional student leadership programs that they wanted us to be doing more with our house groups, and they wanted to see more intentional or a larger strand of outdoor learning. And then in addition to our own data, we of course looked at current research in education. And so you will notice that with this change, there are also things that feel similar because again, we are holding on to those traditions and things that have worked well for us in making some tweaks to help us continue to be forward-thinking and meet the needs of the institution. So what's the same? Community. Mommy Valley is oftentimes referred to as a family. That, that students and families have the opportunity to build relationship over years. It's one of my favorite things about Mommy Valley. And as a pre-K through 12 school, there have always been opportunities for the community to come together. Town halls, assemblies, all school gatherings. I actually pulled this photo from a few years ago, so you'll notice some of the children look much different now, but those go even further back than this picture where it's hard to see, but way in the back, we have upper school students there as well. We have big bodies, also lots of different things where we have opportunities and we use the advantage of having one campus with multiple age groups. They're really highlights of a Mommy Valley experience. Mixed age group learning will continue as well. In all of our divisions, Mommy Valley has been able to see the benefits of multi-age groups from our academics and ELC where they have been implementing pre-K JK mixed groups since last year. And then in our ELS, or in our lower school groupings, which you're all familiar with, primary LI and UI. And that really goes all the way up to our advisories and middle and upper school, and then also some courses or programming where we continue to, where we have mixed our kids. So we have personally found as an institution and research definitely supports that mixed age classes allow for a more heterogeneous or diverse group of students that, that can find shared similarities and talk about differences in their interests and talents and their ideas. We see leaders emerge as they mentor students and friendships that range in age that are long-lasting, not only amongst our students, but also that happen between family and faculty relationships. So what's different is that the grade levels within the division communities are going to sound a little different to you. And then the combination of ages and grades and mixed age learning, and that's where I wanted to take a little bit of time to make sure that people understood the why, the research behind it. And it really comes down to child development stages and how students learn, and then teacher prep and licensure, which is aligned with that. So early childhood education is a branch of education that relates to teaching of children really from birth to age eight. Have children that young here. So for us, it would be pre-K through age eight or grade three. And students in these early years begin to explore independence physically, socially, emotionally, and cognitively. In this range of development, they are developing their foundational skills, including for the first time, building relationships outside of their own families, understanding how to work with others, building blocks in numeracy and in literacy. Teachers of this age group receive their education that prepares them to teach all subjects. They are generalists, and there's a heavy focus on reading instruction. So we see a major shift in learning standards in, in between third and fourth grade in particular. Learning before third grade or third grade and below, I should say, really focuses on how to read. They're building that foundation. In fourth grade, it shifts, and many of our learning standards are now using reading so that students can use reading to learn. Middle childhood, which is defined in different ways sometimes, so here we're going to refer to ages nine to 11. That's a developmental period where we see cognitive abilities develop significantly in a way that allows children to handle more complex intellectual problem solving and then navigate more complex social and friendship challenges. It's also often when a lot of physical changes start to happen in children. And then in early adolescence, beginning age 12, children are continuing to develop in similar yet more complex ways in their cognitive, social, emotional, and physical development. So because of this ability to apply their foundational academic skills, they begin more content-specific learning in fourth grade. Teachers of this age group also receive their education differently. They're not generalists anymore. Typically, they specialize in two content areas that they then can provide in more detail for the students as they learn. So from an academic standpoint, as it relates to child development, beginning in fourth grade, children are able to learn differently and teachers are trained to provide the expertise needed at the different age, with the different age groups. And we want our students to experience programming designed to meet them at their appropriate, appropriate cognitive level. From a social emotional standpoint, we do see the benefits of combining the students in the new divisions as a whole community on occasion. So what I mean by that is it will be similar to our community gatherings, but with experiences that are tied more closely to program that, where students can speak to common experiences that do feel more developmentally appropriate. For example, we might bring our pre-K to three students together for a planned forest school experience, but we would not have preschool students regularly interacting with our third grade students. Similarly, we might bring our fourth through eight students together on occasion to share service learning, which will be a component of that division that Eric will tell you more about later. So they might come together to share their experiences, which may look different in terms of service learning, but it's something that ties them together and gives them the opportunity to learn from one another and have that mixed age experience. But we are not going to have fourth graders interacting with eighth graders on a regular basis. So in going back to the why, we believe that it honors our Mommy Valley, Mommy Valley values of community leadership and building empathy in a way that connects more closely to the learning standards that children are taught to teacher education programs and what we know has worked at Mommy Valley, but can be tweaked and continue to improve. Ultimately, we believe that this change is best for our students. You'll hear more from Michelle and Eric that that goes into even more detail for each of their divisions. But just a little bit about the process, we began exploring this change three years ago, which built upon research from a mixed age group task force that, that I believe was 2015. I might be off by a year. But it was driven by teacher feedback during curriculum updates and how it affected the teaching of different ages. So from there, we conducted more research, which also included looking at different schools who had similar models. In this past summer, we really, we really worked hard. By we, I mean a group of teachers and I who worked on a faculty summer grant to review research and make recommendations, and then we worked in collaboration with the division heads Lynn, our academic leadership team to make sure that we felt comfortable and confident in these changes. So we've worked on some curriculum and alignment. This school year, we were dedicating our late start time to continuing the work of the summer grant group, so we will continue to look at curricular changes in addition to looking at some student programming. And again, Michelle and Eric will speak in more detail because it's a little bit different per, per division. We are emphasizing quality of program and know that with any change, in order for it to be done well, it should be intentional and paced in a way that can be managed with appropriate training and support for our teachers as well. And so we are paying attention to the pace of change. We are, and again, you'll hear from Michelle and Eric what that means, but there are elements of it that we are implementing next year, and then some elements that will be applied the following year so that it feels manageable and that we're doing it successfully. If you have any questions about the research or the process of this, please feel free to drop them in the chat. I'm going to actually share a link to a document that just includes some of our, some of our research that we used. It's not all-inclusive to the research, but we thought it might be helpful for any families who are interested in reading it. So I'll drop the link to that in the chat. And we will go ahead and move on and hear from our division heads so we can, so we can understand more about each division. So Michelle, take it away.
Yeah, thanks Paula. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Michelle Thomas, and I'm so excited to be overseeing the pre-K through third grade lower school division and to share our vision with you tonight. So our pre-kindergarten students who can enroll as young as three years old are going to be with our junior kindergarten students, and that actually happened, as Paula said, last school year, and we're currently implementing that this school year. Our kindergarten and first grade students are going to be grouped together, and our second and third grade students will be grouped together. And as Paula mentioned, the term early childhood education refers to students in the third grade and below. So this is one of the reasons we decided to make our third graders the leaders of the lower school before they transition into the middle school division. And I wanted to thank those of you who filled out our form in advance of this town hall meeting. There was a question about class placement. And so if you currently have a first grader, but question was specifically about a first grader, next year they would advance to second grade, and they would be in a classroom of second and third graders together. There was also a comment about a current second grader being expected to help in a second and third grade mixed age group without having any mixed age group experience. And so I understand that some of our second graders will have only had grade level specific classes up until this point. But it's not going to be a problem. Don't worry, because they have experience and different strategies to learn new skills. They know how to make and maintain friendships, and they've had exposure to the second grade curriculum that next year's second graders will be exposed to. So they're going to be natural leaders and their teachers are going to help them every step of the way. There was another question about students who might need a little extra help in their grade, in their grade level. And the realignment change is not going to affect any class placements. So our student support process is going to remain the same. So teachers in kindergarten through third grade, they always pre-assess at the start of the unit, and they take that data to determine which students would qualify for enrichment and intervention services based on the content of the units they're teaching. So we're going to continue to meet the needs of all students where they are on their individual learning journey. With this grade level realignment, our students are going to continue to benefit from the same world-class programming as we've offered in the past. So our expert teachers, they're going to continue to teach your child how to learn and to ensure that they build the academic foundation, including the foundational relationships with teachers and amongst peers that they need for the future. Forest school is going to continue to be implemented in our lower school with our pre-K and JK students in the forest every day, while our kindergarten through third grade students are in the forest once a week. We're going to continue to put a large focus on social emotional learning, which emphasizes identity, responsible decision-making, self-regulation, self-awareness, social awareness, and relationship skills. Our grade level curriculum and the areas of math and language arts are not going to change, and we're just slightly shifting our science and social studies units to better align with the new mixed age groupings. Our pre-K through third grade students will experience mixed age learning in the areas of language arts, science, social studies, music, art, and PE. And as Paula mentioned, the, the pacing of change, we're going to continue to teach math by grade level next year. And this is going to allow our teachers to dive deeper into the research and get some professional development on best practices in mixed age group math. We're going to continue to offer experiential learning experiences that are grounded in play-based and inquiry-based approaches to learning. We're going to continue our day trips and having guest speakers come into the classroom in each grade level as it aligns with our curriculum. And these trips may evolve or change from year to year depending on the resources that are available in our local community and based on the units that are being taught. Community and creating a sense of family and belonging are also be a top priority for our lower school. We're going to continue to gather together as a lower school community by continuing our music concerts and our art shows, our fall family campfires, our big end-of-unit celebrations, and our third graders are going to be celebrated at a moving up ceremony. The students are going to have opportunities to work with children and other grade levels within the lower school during town hall meetings. And right now, our teachers are currently spending time researching different co-teaching models to implement for next year. So our pre-K and JK classrooms are going to consist of one teacher and one assistant, as they historically have. And our K through third grade teachers are going to be utilizing co-teaching models to allow for flexible grouping of students depending on the learning objective. So why do we believe mixed age group learning is the best for children? Well, research would strongly support the idea that mixed age group classrooms are better for students. Not only do students outperform peers of the same age academically, but studies also show that they thrive socially. In a mixed age classroom, teachers can tailor the instruction for each student rather than setting the instructional pace for the whole group. So our model allows for students who are ready for a challenge to advance without becoming bored, and it also provides extra time for students who might need a little more time to work on a concept without feeling pressured or rushed to move on prematurely. So every child is going to continue to move along their own learning continuum. Another great benefit is that students are more likely to cooperate and collaborate together than to compete. The spirit of cooperation and caring makes it possible for children to see each other as individuals as opposed to competitors. And so that generates a family of learners who support and care for one another. Our older children are going to have the opportunity to serve as mentors and take leadership roles. They're going to model more sophisticated approaches to problem solving, and this is going to help the younger children accomplish tasks that maybe they couldn't do independently. And this dynamic increases the older children's level of independence and competence while increasing the younger child's spirit of belonging in a community of learners. There's also great research about increased self-esteem and language development for children in mixed age group settings. So this research kind of supports why we want to return to our mixed age group setting starting next year. And as Paula mentioned, you can view the articles and research that we've cited in the, in the chat below. There's a link. And speaking of the chat, if you have any questions, concerns, or excitements to share, please put them in the chat, and we'll address them at the end of the presentation. So now I'm going to hand it over to Eric Graham, who's going to oversee the middle school division.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to explain to you kind of the, the last iteration of, you know, the, the traditions and the hallmarks that Paula was discussing. And then additionally, the, the research that both Paula and Michelle have, are standing on now, will continue to stand on that in this new division. I've had the opportunity to lead the middle school for about six years now, and also the, you know, the lower school, including the LI, the UI for the last almost year and a half. And really what we're doing with this, with this division four through eight is we're taking what we really do well, and we are combining it and consolidating it, and we're taking the strengths of our teachers so that we can positively impact our students. So I am really thrilled. This is going to be a really interesting division moving forward. We have some points of emphasis in terms of outdoor learning. You know, this is going to look different, obviously, in the, in the older grades than it is in pre-K through three, but we're going to take that spirit of forest school, and we're going to run with it, and we're going to continue to develop those skills, and we're going to make connections to science class, intentional outdoor learning experiences as well as connecting into our advisory program and incorporating different parts of our social, social emotional learning. In addition to that, the middle school team has worked very hard over the last several years to really implement both getting our students out into the community and building our service learning program. And what we want to do is to bring that, again, bring that thread down into the fourth grade, fourth through eighth, where we are building this sense of, sense of service amongst our students to each other, to our school, to our community. And we've got a variety of different ways that we're going to do that, but again, will look different, obviously, in the lower grades and then building it up through, through the upper. But we'll have time dedicated to connecting with the Toledo community. We'll have service learning kind of projects curriculum that are based in curriculum for grades four and five. And then beginning in sixth grade, we'll start to get students out into the community and so they can see their, their, their hard work and their impact in their own community. And then with addition to that, student leadership, also another passion of mine where we want to create structures where kids can demonstrate all sorts of leadership, right? Like we want students to really understand the concept of leadership and that it's not necessarily, you know, being an extrovert, taking charge all the time and bossing people around, and there are different ways that students can lead one another. And we're going to drill down and in different ways, we're going to create different organizations and opportunities for kids to, to learn those leadership skills, because that's not something that we just expect kids to do, is to turn around and be leaders. We need, we need to teach them. So what does this look like? Lynn, if you would. All right. So four through eight, you know, is a lot. It's a lot. And I want people to think of our fourth and fifth grade. This is where we're going to have our mixed age groups, right? So think of it as a UI or an ally if that makes more sense to you. All right, that'll have generalist teachers, but the mixed age groups will be involved in specials, social studies, social emotional learning, human growth and development. They'll be part of the entire middle school meeting, fourth through eighth. Just like in lower school, we would have a first through sixth grade meeting, we'll have a fourth through eighth right there. And then they'll have their own experiences in terms of outdoor learning, service learning, and, and those leadership opportunities that I mentioned earlier. We're going to, we're going to thread those experiences at age-appropriate levels throughout the division. And then for next year, we will do that as well with our sixth grade. Our sixth grade is going to continue to have their, their, their teachers that they have this year in terms of those extended blocks with language arts and STEM. And they'll, they will participate and with grade seven and eight in terms of athletics, advisory, X block, and middle school meeting. And for those of you who are not familiar with middle school programming, X block is a community service program where students get out into the community during the school day and then reflect on it during the week in their advisory. And if you want to talk more about that later, we can, but that's one of the major programs that we're trying to like spread down into the lower grades. And then our middle school, next year, grade seven and eight will continue with their content-specific classes. So they'll continue with their regular schedule of languages and their academic courses as well as their specials courses. And then they'll have their, their traditional experience of athletics, advisory, X block, and middle school meeting. Those things are not going to change a whole lot for grade seven and eight next year. Let's go to the next year, please. So the following year, we will continue to have our, our area four, five, and we'll continue to have and develop those mixed age group experiences. And then in grades now sixth, seventh, and eighth, we're going to take a lot of those constructs that are used in instruction with the UI in terms of those longer periods, and we're going to bring those into grade seven and eight. Now, again, we're not mixing grade levels at this point. If students in sixth grade, they're going to be taking sixth grade math and sixth grade social studies and sixth grade science, and same for seven and same for eight. But with these extended periods, we can create a more progressive schedule in which we can, teachers can collaborate in terms of more interdisciplinary lessons. All right. So again, that's what four through eight looks like. And I did kind of prepare a couple of answers to questions that, that came about. I noticed that people were very concerned that fourth graders are going to be in classrooms with eighth graders, and that's just not the case. Just again, just as we didn't have first graders in classrooms with sixth graders when we had a traditional lower school, those two grade levels won't be mixing unless it's an intentional experience to build community or leadership or outdoor learning or service. So those, those are the, the, those will be the motivations to bring kids together. And again, those experiences will be intentional. And again, those experiences will be intentional and not just kind of like, you know, downtime, hanging around in the same area or whatnot. Like we, we're going to be very cognizant of that. I think people are pretty concerned with regard to things like trips. And I wouldn't say that anything is finalized at this point, but I would say that we are gearing towards having our trips being kind of the capstone of our outdoor education experiences. So we'll see a lot of camps and a lot of, some of them that we've already experienced as well. So grades four and five would like to go to South Bass Island and Camp Store. Grade six, Camp Joy. Grade seven, this year we are experimenting with going to the Global Village this year in Howell, Michigan. So that may be, may continue to be a tradition. And then we look forward to developing something in the eighth grade that is outdoor education based. Athletics, you may have seen in my, my slides, there was athletics was combining with the seventh and eighth grade. We've done that for the first time this year and we've gotten some fairly substantial positive feedback from that. And, but I do want to make a distinction is that essentially the sixth grade can join the seventh and eighth grade teams when we're not competing in tech champion or tech competitions. And what I mean by tech is the, the conference that we compete in. And so during our fall in spring seasons, sixth grade will participate with the middle school. And then in the winter with our basketball seasons, essentially each grade level will have its own team. So sixth grade would have its own team competing against tech teams and seventh grade and so forth. Also some concern and questions about moving up ceremonies. Michelle mentioned that we're going to have one in the third grade coming into the fourth, fifth grade area, which will be phenomenal. We haven't finalized those yet. I would foresee one leaving fifth grade headed into sixth grade. And then of course, capping things off with our eighth grade moving up ceremony is, is one of my favorite events at school. And I think it's, it's really special. So that is our division four through eight. I hope that you are a fraction of as, as excited as I am. And I would love to get any feedback and/or questions. So I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Lynn.
Thanks, Eric. And thanks, Michelle and Paula. We are going to open it up for Q and A. So as folks have already shared, feel free to put anything you would like in the chat. And I'm also going to stop sharing so that we can see one another again. And you are welcome to take yourself off mute, raise your hand or jump in there and ask a question.
I had a question in the chat here regarding leadership opportunities in third grade. It's something that we are still intentionally planning. But when I think of leadership opportunities, I think of last year, there were a group of second grade girls who were noticing some litter when we were out in forest school and created this huge initiative with, which included creating posters all around the lower school, presenting at town hall, going to each of the classrooms and talking about the litter that's outside, what we can do. I believe they wrote a letter to Mrs. Castro to see if we could get some outside trash cans that we're working on this year. And that all came organically from them, right? That's, that was their leadership shining through when they were talking to me about how can we solve this problem? I was just prompting them about, well, how can we spread the word and what can we do? So even just organic opportunities, and those were second graders, right? So think about the opportunities that can come in third grade. So some will be intentionally planned by the teachers and developmentally appropriate. And we also want to build upon those organic teaching moments as well to empower them. So I hope that kind of answers the question a little bit.
All right. We have a question about the arts. Who would like to speak to what the special classes will look like?
I can do that.
I think, am I, can people hear me? Yeah, sure. So I think, you know, honestly, if I look at the, the competition and all the other schools that we go up against and we sometimes lose kids around sixth grade, whether it's St. John's or St. or St. Francis, or the girl's school, St. Ursula, TSA, they all have pretty, actually really strong arts programs. And they have the kids involved in at least two, multiple opportunities a year. And I'm wondering what our plans are because I heard that the sports was addressed. I don't, you know, that's not really my concern, but I'm curious what the, what the opportunity are for these kids to be leaders and learn in the arts.
Absolutely. Great question, Jess. So basically, you know, headed into, in particular, grade six, seven and eight, in particular, seven and eight, we have opportunities in particular for, we have, you know, music and then production and then visual arts. And with regard to perhaps theater production, we have, you know, a two-year course with Brian Bozanich, who is of course the director of the Theater Arts at Mommy Valley. And he runs a fantastic class that is wide ranging in terms of, you know, basic theater acting skills as well as entire theater production. And those events will culminate, culminate in several productions that the students perform in. So essentially there's a kind of a middle school showcase in which all the arts come together and there are performances and there's artwork presented as well as some vocal performances as well. And through that, then people are, can get plugged into even upper school productions. And then there's the, the production every other year that Mr. Bozanich will do with regard to like a, a lower school, middle school production. So that's, that's what we have going. And Jess, if you want to further talk about the arts program, I would love to do so. I think it's really strong. And I think, I think, so if you can get a lot out of it.
And building into that, I've talked with Luann about having art club, extracurricular art club for K through three after school. And Jenica is looking at starting strings in second grade. So there'll be some opportunities in addition to our private music lessons as well for lower school.
All right, we've got Carly with a question about fifth and sixth graders will be losing moving up ceremonies and losing their opportunities to be leaders. We are still working on, either Eric or Michelle, if you want to jump in and cover this, feel free. But we are still working on what the transition, how we will get those pivotal year end events in as we transition. The sixth grade moving up ceremony is one of my absolute favorite, followed closely by the eighth grade moving up ceremony. And so it's not, we don't want them to go away. We want to figure out what the right time is, whether or not we need to do two in one year, or whether it's when this, you know, it happens at fifth grade when the sixth graders start interacting more with the middle school. So we really don't intend to drop that. And we want to make sure that we're celebrating kids at the end of each year, but providing definitely capstone experiences at the end of each division. Does anybody want to talk to about leadership in fifth and sixth grade?
Sure. Lynn, I would just reiterate, like, we're going to sit down and make sure that nobody gets left out in terms of being appreciated as we move forward into this. And then in terms of leadership, you know, moving forward, we have institutions like Kid Council that are already in place that are highly kind of visible and involved in working with events around school and working with younger kids. Additionally, we're going to expand the Big Buddy program and making sure that our older students are working with younger students in a variety of capacities. The, I can't say that all the specifics for the fifth and sixth in particular are, are laid out at this point, but it is a high priority on our list and we're going to get some, some amazing opportunities for those kids.
All right. We have a question from Rachel on class sizes.
Yeah. Hi, Rachel. So our class sizes in the lower school are not dramatically changing. It's very similar to what we're doing now. So our goal for pre-K JK is 15 students, K1, 16, and 23, 17 students. And that's very similar to what we're, our current practice. With that pre-K JK classroom, there'll be one teacher and one assistant. And then for K and above, there'll be one homeroom teacher for that amount of kiddos. But then they're going to be co-teaching and flexible grouping throughout the, the area. So I hope that helps answer your question.
All right. Our next question is from Lisa. Paula, maybe you can handle this one as our curriculum coordinator. Is Mandarin being considered as a foreign language for lower school?
Not at this time. Love to hear, I, as a former world language teacher, would love to hear other languages that we might want to bring into Mommy Valley one day. But there are opportunities for Mandarin beginning in middle school that Eric maybe could speak a little bit more to. But perhaps down the road, I would just say not right now. It's not, it's not being considered for next year, certainly.
Yeah, no, I can jump in there. We do, we offer some alternate language programming in the middle school. So essentially, if your child doesn't want to take Spanish, they have some different options in which they can plug in and do some online learning because we belong to a consortium of, a consortium of schools that, that teach in particular, American Sign Language and Mandarin. And right now in middle school, I've got about eight students that are doing, that are doing that and they love it. And the really wonderful thing about taking Mandarin online is you get the best of both worlds because essentially you have this wonderful online Mandarin teacher who's online, but she's also right down the hallway. So her own Ivy Galler, teach, who teaches Mandarin in the upper school, teaches this online course as well. And so students can interact with her face to face as well as progressing through the, the online course. But yeah, so languages open up a bit in the middle school and it's built a larger American Sign Language program as well that, that is quite popular as well.
All right. We have a question on logistics from Nathan. Will the students be using the same classroom or spaces for their respective grades as they are now? Michelle, do you want to speak to your part? And Eric, you can speak to the other.
Yes, sure. We're still finalizing plans, but the, the current plan now is to house pre-K through second grade. So our pre-K JK, no, sorry, our pre-K JK and our K1 classes in the Smeed Building. And where the current primary is, that will be our second and third grade. So that one side of the lower school there. So kind of split between the Smeed Building and the lower, the current lower school.
And for our four, five students, they will probably be straight back where the lower intermediate is now. And then we will also utilize some of the space that the UI takes up to have two middle school classrooms right outside the middle school. And, and then what we want to do is, is to not like isolate that as like a sixth grade space, but to kind of have some seventh or eighth grade teachers move out of the middle school. So there's kind of a flow of students that go back and forth. So the sixth grade feel included in the middle school as well.
One of the challenges that we have experienced as we have thought about this for years, this actually predates my time here at Mommy Valley, has been our wonderful open resource center and how it is designed. And many of you might have heard that, you know, my dream is to renovate that lower school and update it a bit and also our middle school as well. And I wish that this came with a capital campaign that we could design some new spaces, but it doesn't. But we didn't want the physical space to be the reason we don't move forward with what we think is right for our kids. Thank you for your excitement, Mr. Green. Anybody else want to jump in with a question?
Or feel free to share things you're excited about, like Mr. Green just did. We open with concerns. I, that's where I think some of the questions are. It is change. We want to make sure that people are understanding it as best as possible so that we can help alleviate any concerns that you have.
I'll go. Hi, question about as we get closer to this, maybe in the spring, have you guys considered maybe smaller grade level discussions so that for us parents with kids in a certain grade, we can have a sense of what might be changing and what's different, will be different?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion. And I think I'd be on the lookout for MVPA coffees and different opportunities to like, you know, absolutely, we want to get people to understand the, the different grade levels within the areas. And yeah, just be on the lookout for MVPA meetings and we'll get those on the calendar and we will get those, get those out to you.
Thank you. All right. Clarification question. So next year, sixth graders do not take classes with seventh or eighth. Is that accurate, Eric?
That's not only accurate, it's, I would like to, for people to understand that eighth graders take classes with eighth graders and seventh graders take classes with seventh graders. So there's not a whole lot of mixing traditionally in the, in the middle school at this point either. So again, we're looking for those anchor points of community, those meeting points, the service learning, the outdoor education. Those are the things that are going to, that are going to shape and form our community.
Next questions from Jennifer, probably back to you, Eric, again. So did I understand it that sixth grade will be out in the community weekly, daily, not daily? Does MVCDS transport groups to students, groups of students to those sites?
So right now we have, we, our seventh and eighth grade, once a week for 10 weeks, goes out into the community for about an hour and a half, utilizing all of our vans and buses. And sometimes we request some parent assistance with that to, to, to take your own kids out to, to different placements. So with sixth grade, we are, we, we do want to get kids out eventually, but we, we, we can't all do that at the same time. So I don't have enough vans and buses to get sixth graders out at the same time as everyone else. But we will kind of baby step and inch them along in terms of them getting out into the community. So it's not something that we're going to go full speed into, but it's something that will, parents will have plenty of notice. They'll have plenty of information like moving forward and it's something that will, we'll, we'll get there.
Will sixth graders lose recess? Will they be eating with eighth graders?
Um, I do not know yet, to be totally honest. I'm not sure. I can't imagine. I'm not going to say that, but I'm, I'm not sure. And that would be kind of one of the common times that we would, you know, we want to structure events where we have kids of varying age ranges and levels. So I'm not sure yet, but they certainly will not lose recess as that is something that is important to us. Some of the schools that we actually went out and researched that have this model emphasized keeping and calling it recess through middle school. Because right now, middle school kids, they, they have a break where they go out and play and run around and have a nice time, but they don't call it recess. But perhaps we will.
All right. I'm not seeing any more messages coming. Mr. Green, thank you for your comment. As of now, the middle school offers 50 minutes of recess and breaks. Thank you. Which would be our current seventh and eighth graders. Feel free to unmute. If you have any final questions, throw them in the chat. Those of us that have been presenting tonight will stay on a few more minutes if you want to talk more intimately. And Kim, I loved your idea of trying to get some grade level specific meetings on the calendar as we move into the spring. And so we'll definitely make that happen. But I appreciate you all for coming out tonight. Thank you so much. We will make sure that we record and send out this present, send out the link to the presentation so that anybody who is able, not able to access it can also watch this if they would like. But we appreciate you being with us tonight. Jennifer, I see your question. Yes, we've got student education on the radar.